All right. We are, whenever you're ready. This is the meeting of the City of Edmonton Council. On this meeting to order at 2:06 on Tuesday, the 15th of April. Absolutely. Chair Rato, present. Councilmember Hotchkiss. Councilmember Canada is absent. Councilwoman Medvesky.
Present.
Thank you. So we will today be discussing our 2553 considered in this committee. So local law to establish proactive rental housing inspection program and amending chapter 265/6 of the city code. I think before we dig into the legislation and the materials that were provided themselves, I want to review next steps a bit if we could. There have been some internal conversations and review and certainly additional conversation review that will be expected. So just by way of update, much of what we'll be reviewing today was discussion with Corporation Council, Council Hury, regarding legal components to the legislation as it is written. When it was submitted, it was made clear that amendments are expected, welcome in fact to strengthen the enforcement capacity and implementation potential of the legislation. So the first conversation really thus far has been a review by Corporation Council. And I would say one to two dozen notes that we'll discuss today and dig into. Starting there not only in terms of making sense from a city perspective in general legislation, but as is identified in the materials that were submitted with the legislation, that supportive documentation. One of the primary barriers to implementing a proactive code enforcement system over the years thus far has per supervisor Schleier been concerns about what he calls compulsory inspections. And so aspects of this legislation in particular were specifically mimicked and designed to address where that has come up in other municipalities otherwise. So we're going to get into that with the legislation. I do think that the next step after the planning committee considering would be meeting directly with Mayor Cram and with Supervisor Schleier to dig into the logistics. Theoretically, if we can represent for legal concerns or broadly address and the enforcement aspect, the actual logistics of implementation could then be things the supervisor Schleier is able to focus on, things like the database inspection rollout in schedule. In theory, so thoughts on that so far?
That's fully down. So like the logistic case of it. You don't know the answer to this right now, but it's the getting this, the first sweep of inspections. You don't have any idea how long that will take, right?
We do. I mean, I anticipate that to inspect all of the potentially impacted units, it'll take three years. An additional four code enforcement officers and three years to do the first round of inspections. The caveat to that is that's related to inspection, the registration component. However, the death by an identified for registration is with January 31st from 26th, depending on the passage of this. So there's two different schedules for this.
So it's three years with the current staff?
No, three years with that. No, that's okay. It, the, so some of that goes through the supportive materials. The numbers that we're looking at in terms of units. So, India, this is a constant analysis. You're welcome. So with a, an estimated around 19,000 rental units throughout the city that would be impacted, which again is an estimate since we don't have a full representation without a current registration process. If we estimate around 19,000 rental units throughout the city, expecting $100 annually. Three years, we'd be looking at just over 6,000 units each year. If you break that 19,000 down. If we consider about 17, under 50 work hours a year, that's where we got the four code enforcement officers.
Did you work on the money stuff with the comptroller?
Not with the comptroller yet because it hasn't been. This was estimated externally with the folks who were involved in reviewing this.
Okay. Just in terms of like retirement and all the fringe and stuff, are you sure all that's kept?
I think we, yeah, I, one of the barriers to hiring, as I understand it within the code enforcement office, has been the low salary with the French benefits. So we're estimating a higher salary. We would be looking at program income for those 19,000 units at $100 annually of about 1.9 million in terms of program incomes. Those four officers, a higher salary rate, none of this is set in stone. I just want to reiterate that these are the estimates that we're working with. We said a higher salary rate, the cost of those four officers could be around $320,000 annually, which would still leave about 1.6 million of that annual program income to go towards operations and supporting the enforcement or rehabilitation.
So when we're breaking that down, are you thinking like software, are you thinking?
Right, the, so the city has been involved.
The attorney, the code attorney, some of her.
Multiple iterations. Yeah, she, so I did speak with Council Russell and the opportunity to support her efforts potentially with a legal, with other staff as she focuses on enforcement would be wrapped into operations.
And like the cars, that kind of, that side of things, for them to actually get to places, all that.
Those are the, yeah, so with all of this, that's the conversation. What I was hoping to do, again, because one of the primary barriers from Supervisor Schleier's perspective has been that compulsory inspection, the legal component. My hope in addressing that first is to now give Supervisor Schleier the opportunity to focus on the logistics pieces like the data, like the software, like the hiring of staff, like the budget. Certainly, meeting with the comptroller, I appreciate that as well, at that in terms of next steps.
I'm sure you've seen this before, but the, the kind of concept of this has been implemented in other localities.
Doesn't.
Doesn't. Any in New York?
Albany and Kingston.
Albany.
Are the two in New York who have cases have been brought challenging their legislation and they've been sustained. The legislation has been sustained, so that's where some of the language. Rochester is really, I would say, the model to mimic. Rochester, I would say drove and has been driving this in the state of New York. Rochester's model is the structure that the state-led rental registry is modeled after. So one of the things I hope to discuss today as well is I have reached out to the mayor's office in Rochester and looking at meeting to, or meeting with their code enforcement department. The key to a lot of what they've been going forward has been their code enforcement director who initiated and has sort of just, I would say innovatively addressed this in ways that Rochester and Syracuse were both involved in discussion during the Brum County State Housing Task Force conversations about the same approach. And the county invited Rochester and Syracuse personnel to town hall discussions as well. So not new to advising that this makes sense. Their initial thoughts before I keep going with the next step. So we've got reaching out to Mayor Cram, Supervisor Schleier, meeting with the comptroller. When this was introduced, very much represented wanting to hear from community residents. So I'd like today as well to move toward that first town hall. I have had several conversations with landlords since this was implemented truly prior as well, but officially since this was implemented, as well as a request from larger property management companies about meeting. All of those conversations can certainly continue to happen, but I would like to comment. I'd like to meet today, see today in the first town hall. The other group that has been identified as a potential corporation for collaboration, Health Department, we're all aware was awarded funding to move forward rental registration program. I reached out to the need of that, of that program that she and her team have been, I've been in conversation with them really over the last year since they were awarded, but they're still stuck in public comment at the state level. I'm just going to read what she represented. So public comment period ended in February for the draft rental registry regulations at the state level. The last she heard the state was revealing those comments. So they have not received any additional guidance or the finalized regulations. So they remain willing to collaborate, but she doesn't have an idea of how productive those conversations could be on their part until they have final regulation.
The whole crap.
Yeah. Yeah. Are there, before we start digging into my conversation with Corporation Councils, any other next steps that they've been missing? Really quickly, meeting with Mayor Cram, Supervisor Schleier, and the comptroller, going to the town hall, meeting with Rochester folks, and at some point, meeting with Brum County Health Department. All that rental team, but.
No, since you'd like to be meeting in Rochester. Contacted them or?
Yeah.
I wasn't contacted. Other assistant corporation councils, I didn't handle one. All part of the actual.
I think all, what I was planning to do was start a follow-up with the mayor in Rochester. Kind of get a sense of, I've connected with code enforcement folks in the past, but I need to, or mention, I'm sure there are others involved in the process. So I was going to get this feedback of who involved and then go from there. To, and also certainly if anyone wants to be a part of the conversation, what would the sense be as far as, but do we invite them to a planning committee meeting? Or do we have a kind of a more focused internal conversations? I don't know if we have, I don't know what we have.
Whether they're open to, I mean, I take a field trip up there, they're our main person or at least in call. We believe this is questions, potential potential roadblocks. hurdles that they had to. Syracuse also has an administrative group, right? But we are focusing on Rochester.
Well, I mentioned before, when you came, that Syracuse has been involved in conversations locally as well dating back to 2017. So we could invite Syracuse to.
Lightning quick, 2017.
Yeah, tell me about it. That's when I started advocating for this. It's been a super fun, almost 10 years. It's been needs to avoid. Okay, so Syracuse too, absolutely. Why don't I reach out to them, get a sense of their availability? Do we meet this month or early next?
Next week's, this week's my kids, it's been raised, next week's your kids.
So last week of the month would be ideal for, for first week of May. Yeah, somewhere in the, okay. Do we want to talk about that scheduling that town hall? Now too, before we move on? Do folks feel like we want to be further, I guess is my question. We want to be further along in any of this before we're scheduling a town hall? I'm okay with all being simultaneous, we get as much of that in the process as possible, but.
And then I guess the kind of question in terms of who, who's presenting at the town hall, how we're doing outreach for it. You know, for good cause, like I brought up that if it had done the thing with the landlord attorney and the tenant attorney and earlier to be able to like facilitate stuff and it, or very good feedback about that. This might be another kind of situation where having those types of persons that can answer both sides of the coin questions might be helpful in the town hall. Or maybe that's a further along thing in the first town hall is just basically a big public comment section, session where there's like more directed invitation and more press releases and stuff to try and just get people's gut reactions. I'm not sure how like.
I was doing that, I'd have presentation at the beginning of the town hall.
Yeah.
People show up with.
Otherwise, it would be, it would be more just in the general, let's talk about code.
Right. Going to hear about people's neighbor's fences and things. Not.
Yeah, so, so yeah, presentation first, I think it makes a lot of sense.
So would that be you or an outside organization that you've been working with?
I think what I would envision is an overview. Overview in terms of the expectations outlined.
What we have now versus what we're trying to achieve.
Right.
As to how.
Right, yeah.
I'm just trying to think who the, the right manager of that is.
I mean, we could ask Rochester, Syracuse folks if they'd be able, or all the Shaw, Kingston folks, if they would be interested in coming to rent. Like I would want to do as little talking as possible in a town hall. Or have like us doing not as much talking as folks who are there. Like giving as much opportunity for anyone who is attending to ask their questions, have them answered. I think we can anticipate many will just come and comment and support or against, that's fine too. But and then, I mean, I don't think it should be the only town hall. So I mean, maybe we ask those who come or those who we're connecting with, what the next, the structure of the next town hall should look like, what more do they need to hear, who really wants their front?
So just like, say where we're at. That's more people. It's like or is that or budgets? It's legal concerns. I'm sure we'll get to, we'll get to corporation councils. Whether it's some interracing, it has to be referendum or something. Referendum, this whole junky timeline of ours.
I mean, we can, we could. We could get into from Corporation Council, the so the first. So the very first note that Council Hury did have is that the existing, in terms of an ordinance versus a local law, the existing chapter 265, section 6. We need to be repealed at the local law or have the legislation change from ordinance to a local law. In talking through that with Council Hury, the repealing of the local law and replacing it would be subject to public hearing and veto, which I'm fully comfortable with. And so, I mean, I would be leading more towards repealing that the section entirely and replacing it with this new section.
But also make the new section a local law. Which is a little more of a bust group. I've never heard clear, and there might not be clear definitions of why you use one or the other way to do it. There's some situations where you need to have a local law, but not all or else, I have to top, that's why.
And you're in zone bar, what we've had to choose local law, and it's specifically been because we're overriding a previous local law and that's the only way to do that. We have a better answer. I think the process to adopting a local law is those conducive to how we have said we wanted to approach this legislation from the beginning. Lots of community input, lots of opportunity for folks to weigh in. Certainly, I mean, subject to the mayor's perspective, all of the things, I mean. Every chance to weigh in. That this represented the fee to be created. So. Article 2. Right, so Article 2 registration fee, the section 6 does establish a fee. His recommendation and Council of Calumns has identified it is if a fee is to be paid every year when the owners register their properties referencing the fee schedule, would be better than putting establish fee in the law itself because the only way to change that is via local law. So we're doing the replacement. The standard is like from time to time is set by the fee schedule. Yep, so that was a very helpful recommendation. With that being particular, and I'll just reiterate, this was mentioned earlier, that the associated with the registration of the owners are submitting for all of their rental events. The fee is based on, it's a per unit fee and it's an annual per unit fee that happens with the annual registration. So we are going to have to develop an inspection schedule that rolls out over that anticipated through years. But the first deadline for the first submitted registration by owners and associated fees, I have in here is January 31st. 2026 would be the first deadline. That's subject to some change, but this is actually passed. But 30 days after January 1st typically annually.
The, just, just. So we've estimated three years to do inspections. Did I inspect it again?
No, they're inspected every three years. What's not currently included in the legislation as it's written is that specific schedule, not only because we have to flush that out, but I'm really looking. I very much like to, I should say, get feedback from the property owners and community members around that inspection schedule. And the metric, we're going to talk about this a little bit later, what the metric should be for the phase rollout. So if we're looking at inspecting impacted units or eligible units of the description within three years, the question that has to be who do we start with and why? I did discuss that with Council Hury. Well, at the, like, the I'll say first, I really want to get community input on what that metric should be. I have already heard from property management companies and landlords who are saying, start with the worst first. But there should, there could be legal concerns around simply pulling code violation, current code violations of property owners and basically that metric can phase out on that. So rather than.
Just like the dentist's. Dentist's rental unit area.
I think there are a lot of options. My thought was get everybody's. My thought was get everybody's feedback on what they would prefer and run those options by Corporation Council rather than trying to anticipate them and do it that, that way. Again, like really based on feedback and preference. Because the, I mean, property owners, although a number represented that they're in support, there's a large property management company that is represented there in support. Have actually thus far kind of requested the opportunity to opt in prior to the initial deadline. Like, those are the pieces that I would really love to get owner and community from that one rather than laying it all in the legislation. Hearing first and then drafting and amending accordingly. But I think to me, it's point or concern in terms of logistics, integrating that that inspection rollout over three years while also requiring the registration and the fee annually from the beginning is, it's not insurmountable, but it's a logistic, it's tricky logistically. I will say the proposed process of the Corporation Council I discussed so far, just in terms of existing departments and responsibilities, would be if the owner submits registration to the clerk. The clerk notifies code to schedule an inspection. Code sends a certificate of compliance to. Already part of their language. And then the clerk would send the notice of the compliance of proactive rental housing inspection program. So it's not that code is already working with certificates of compliance, but it's already within the code operations.
But many, many, many buildings don't have current.
Correct, correct. But they would, so they would be confirming that that compliance, but it would be the clerk who has now the registration and the certificate of compliance that would be notifying the owner of their compliance with the program.
And so then, is there a piece of that hundred dollars? We were talking, we mentioned sovereign, code attorney, apparently those cars, clerk's office also lists on that part of that budget?
There's not a list, yes, so. Certainly could be.
Because it sounds like it's a large. If they're having multiple, this is part of. For it to be.
I believe self-sufficient. I wonder if you ask code if they have an idea of how many buildings actually have. C O Cs.
I think that's something we can touch on with the supervisor Schleier. It's those, I mean, again, it's really those key logistics.
Or ones that are issued in the last how many years.
We're talking three years at a time, or so. Three years.
No, but I'm saying if the first step is you send in your registration paperwork and sort of get a suit of code compliance back. Go have one.
No, you don't, no, I'm sorry. So, you only get a certificate of compliance after the inspection. So, registration. No, that's okay, so registration.
Pulling code compliance instead of.
Yeah, so the owner submits registration to the clerk, the clerk notifies code to schedule the inspection.
Which could be.
A year out, two out, four years out.
At some point. And I mean, after the first round, this is all obviously. So after the inspection, if the owner. But code sends certificate of compliance to the clerk. That's their standard C O C that they're working with, so there's no new paperwork in that sense for code. But then clerk now has the registration and the C O C, and they then give the notice to the owner that they're in compliance with the proactive rental housing inspection program. And that's what can be posted, that's what can be shared. Written into the legislation as well is that owners who were previously registered under the section we're about to replace. Would potentially be eligible for a lower registration fee. And that's another conversation that I really want to include within community. So if we're, there are examples of municipalities that tier inspections, inspection frequency based on compliance histories. So, if a owner consistently represents compliance with all of the code expectations, rather than being inspected every three years, they get inspected every five years or every six years. Or, so like, there's a tiered option that can be considered. And so I'd be curious what the community wants to probably get our feedback.
What happens?
Could be on that.
On change of ownership.
All of this is subject to, so the registration has to be updated if there's a change in ownership. The change of ownership requirement is in.
So like, you could have a situation where. At home, if I did, I have it, I pay my registration fee January thirty first, I sell the building in March, and then the next people have to pay until our registration be again that year, or they wouldn't have to pay it until the following day.
There, I mean, there, I don't know that we got into the weeds on that in particular in terms of what is represented. Is that upon any change of ownership, the new owner would submit a new registration, like the clerk's office would need to be notified. But that's a helpful piece that I'm not sure is fleshed out. It's like, okay, are they then submitting a new registration and paying for it?
Yeah.
I feel like makes sense for it to transfer. In this scenario, like I think the selling points, like we just did the registration, it's up. It's all.
All good.
Got a gold star for inspection, so you don't have to worry about anything. Hiding anything, sale, like, kind of test your own inspection. There's like buyer assurance there. That's what you want to encourage.
And then the new owner would just be subject to that the following year. That piece is in. On the flip side.
You're joking, you're not hurting work.
Well, I was going to say that on the flip side, in buying conversations, if the landlord can't, if the owner can't represent that they're currently compliant, that's something a potential buyer should be aware of. So I think, I mean, it works both ways. The, so article two, section six is where this performance-based proactive rental housing program fee is mentioned. And again, all subject to amendment and change, but it would identify that an owner of any rental property subject to this chapter previously registered under the former section. It's amended in twenty fifteen, they pay a reduced registration fee. Depending on the number of previous violations. So, I mean, there is still that history of compliance there, but what's represented is a fifty dollar reduced fee that also would be transferred to the fee schedule. So would be subject.
So that's for peoples that paid in.
It's for anyone that's, like, the current rental registration is not effectively enforced.
But there are people.
Still owners who are submitting a registration and.
Do you have an idea how many?
I know that in twenty.
We should be in the budget somewhere.
Yeah, there's the previous city councils actually introduced legislation to return that money to the property owners. It's a small amount, which is why I don't think it will have a, like, full impact per se on the budget, but it still gives, it's like a legacy, right, based on the fact that they opted in long before. It wouldn't transfer with ownership, it wouldn't, but I think it is a way to acknowledge that they have been consistent since it was on the books, even though nobody was making them to.
Is that just a little really disparate on like the West Side?
I don't think so. But I don't know for sure, I haven't seen it. But that's not the only limit. That's not a limited potential incentives for performance, at least here to this. Corporation Council did point out that, well, Council Hury asked if a local phone number is actually necessary. It's not, it's written in the legislation, actual local phone number. They're mining this in now. That was all pointed out to me. So, he did ask as well about, so in terms of penalties. So. Section nine, filing a summary proceeding. So currently written in here is that it would be unlawful for any owner to file a summary proceeding. So pursue eviction if it's in city court against a tenant of a rental unit within a rental property that is not compliant with this program. Council Hury's question is, or was, whether the idea is that this would trigger a violation or just that the proceeding could not move forward with the court. It is the latter, is what, and his recommendation in terms of ensuring the legality of it is to make compliance a prerequisite rather than a defense to be raised to bring in a summary proceeding. It's mostly just semantics, he said. But we talked through some ways to require it as locally as part of eviction petition. Again, so more of a prerequisite.
I, I'm. Okay, I, I mean, I didn't know that was. Well, yes. As far as the, my intent proceeding, especially proceeding, it's a state level law. Interfere with those mechanisms of civic group, but.
That was.
Apparently.
That's what he recommended. This remains in there as a piece of it, and so I think it's language that we can maintain and amend some.
Meaning, meaning the, the paying registry fee or the being in compliance?
Being in compliance.
And being in compliance, being in compliance being letting someone in or passing all the code stuff?
Being in compliance would mean that you were able to demonstrate, you perceived your notice of compliance from the clerk's office.
Right, which would, which would mean that the there weren't serious code issues. So my conversations with code, there are. I have heard of multiple times within my district that are causing code violations of their house. So they could block an eviction by damaging the properties of the compliance. I'm just kind of a little confused about how that fits together.
The program compliance is entirely separate from the summary proceeding. So program, a legislation requires compliance with the program. And then they would receive their notice of compliance with the program.
At least for the initial rollout. Going to have to allow that having applied.
Yeah.
And being having inspection scheduled is sufficient.
Right.
Otherwise you're preventing people.
For, for years.
And that's, that's the integration of the first of that phase rollout. And that's where that, and I flagged that with Council Hury, he and I are going to meet again to continue working through and we can do a planning committee meeting where he comes in with everyone's stuff. I mean, all of that is certainly on the table. But, again, doesn't seem insurmountable. The municipality that I'm aware of that does have, I haven't looked beyond. This, I believe, is functioning as far as impacting summary proceedings in San Francisco. I don't. I haven't looked beyond elsewhere. One of the biggest weaknesses would be existing ordinance and section itself enforcement kind of as a whole, but certainly rental registration, is the lack of enforcement mechanisms to the property owner who persistently refuses to comply. And so, what we very often see, the reason it relates to summary proceedings are landlords with every preference to not invest in maintaining the habitability or conditions of their properties. Are at times weaponizing code, calling code on themselves, so the code violations or that the building is condemned and that tenant is forced out by condemnation. So there's a, I mean, there's a way here to again motivate that investment by impacting the opportunity to.
So just, just for the clarity, if the tenant is the one causing the code violations, it would not hold up the decision. If you can't pass your certificate, get your certificate of compliance because somebody is deliberately tampering with stuff before inspections. That would not make, I'm just trying to make sure how that does it.
That already comes up in summary proceedings and there are there are landlords who are already working with, I mean, it's judge's discretion, but who are often representing that a tenant caused the issue, what is their recourse in that? The way this has worked. This go that I'm aware so far, but because the landlord at some point is able to demonstrate that they had a notice of compliance, it works in the favor when a tenant, after the fact, is causing an issue that causes a condition that would potentially impact a summary proceeding. So it protects in some ways and that it protects tenants in some ways, but does that for owners who are consistently applying.
Everything was good when you moved in.
Yeah. And that's, that's what, like, conversations that I have in terms of what makes that, who knows the tenants, obviously because code did a walkthrough. And then a couple of months later, things are missing that were there before they moved in, like, you know.
Yes, and there are ways to demonstrate all of that. There are, there are ten to twelve comments that Council Hury made or legal edits and inquiries that he's looking into, which is why we're concerned to have this discussion. There's an escrow remedy identified under the penalties section. Tenure protections, excuse me, some of penalties, but section sixteen tenure protections. See, rent escrow, the way that it's written did cause concern for Council Hury. There, there's certainly that. I think the concern that he primarily represented is that escrow remedies are not uncommon, they exist elsewhere already. But the way that it's written here where there's a sixty day period where at the end. There's a 60 day period where at the end of, so at the end. Of all for people watching or all of you here, it's a lengthy paragraph, do you want me to read it and then revisit? Okay, so it shall be unlawful for an owner to allow any unoccupied rental property, rental property to be occupied or to collect rent from a tenant. For occupancy of a rental property during or for any time in which there is not a valid notice of compliance to the property. Tenants of an occupied rental property that lack that notice of compliance shall be entitled to pay the rent that would otherwise have been due to the owner into an escrow account. Which shall be established by the city of Antim in a third party financial institution. That's a remedy that exists elsewhere and not uncommon. If the owner of a rental property obtains a notice of compliance within the first 90 days in which payments are made into that escrow account, the rent in the escrow goes to the owner. If the owner fails to obtain that notice of compliance within those first 90 days, the rent in the escrow shall be paid at the end of those 90 days to the tenant. And then thereafter, the first 90 days, the tenant shall continue paying rent into the escrow account. Until the owner obtains a notice of compliance at the end of every 60 days in which the owner fails to obtain a notice of compliance, the rent in the escrow account shall be paid to the tenant. Council here is concerned with the 60 day, the 90 day, there's a recommendation that is that it would be. More. Liable to. I didn't write that word down. To simply pay, yes, to simply pay out if the tenant. Or pay out at an X date rather than the 60 day, the 90 day, like the money going back to the tenant. Per se of that 60 or 90 day. Some of it is not even the liability piece, it's the administrative piece of monitoring the third party escrow account of a 60 and 90 day.
Who in the city is gonna take on that role?
Yeah, I think that was part of. Good, so that's up for adjustment.
Do you have an example of where this is? Functional system or?
The other escrow remedies? I will double check company in case. I can find what I don't have.
Makes sense as an enforcement. Play ball to. I mean, it's right to your lease, you're providing more ability. The tenant already has the right to withhold rent, if that's not being met, and then. When I get up, Cory can eat. It almost sounds like a receiver.
It's not quite.
That's a Britney Spears thing. Now that was conservative.
But it's like when the city kind of signed a different.
It's a, I mean, receivership is a much. Receivership, like the escrow remedy represents the. Primarily the relationship between the tenant and the tenant or impacts, I would say. Receivership is a relationship primarily between the municipality and the. In the municipality identifying that another party to operate or to manage the property. The other thing that council theory brought up. Was that the potential of filing a lien on the property? And I feel like we talked about this. Where this was submitted, and there was, do you remember what the discussion on that was, why a lien on the property? Is it because of only impacts if they're trying to sell the property? I'd be curious what your thoughts are.
That's when it would, that's when it would be. An issue.
Right, like so a lien.
Somebody else.
Property for a long. So I think that was more, so that was, I mean, council here, I thought that as a possible.
So the lien would impact your ability to sell, whereas this is impacting their cash.
Right. The most effective enforcement, not as sometimes.
So did you discuss with him that what? What part of the city hall would be handling that? Council's office code clerk, I mean, it seems pretty.
I did, but I think as long as, as long as we've got, I mean, I have it in my notes, as long as we've got it in notes, it's something we can.
Well, just thinking about like the idea of, you know, if people, if owner of the property does not have the finances to fix problems of the property. We don't want them to not be able to sell because if they're not going to be able to fix the property, you're just putting them in a situation where it's just going to continue deteriorate. So. To me, it sounds like, you know, making it impossible to sell something. I, and I, I don't know, like. Maybe, I, I don't, I don't know everybody's situations, I guess that's the town hall type of thing, a little bit more, I mean. I'm sure there's probably also landlords that can't afford to fix the properties and aren't doing it. And then, you know.
Would be helpful. And my concerns are getting more and more complicated. This is a, this is a whole extra level complication and can't seem to even. Publicly available list of the licenses for electricians. Unless accident hits lately.
That being, but.
So having city driven. Doesn't, hundreds of escrow accounts are people that are, right, I just seem like. This is a real challenge.
I think that's fair. And, and again, all up for continued discussion. You know, so it's, it's in there so that it can be part of the discussion. If it is insurmountable at this phase, then that's a reality we deal with. But, but it's in there for discussion for parsing out.
Yeah, and I would like to see, again, somewhere where this is something that's, that's working. I wonder, I'm feeling it would be like the first. It's like, it's like, you want to be able to have this option, but it's not like.
Yeah, maybe not during that first year of that, but roll everything else out, but it's.
Yeah.
Kicks in in year three, if everyone's been inspected.
The only final piece on. That I would represent from my conversation with council here. His recommendation that right now towards the end, same section under tenant protections. His recommendation, rather than the director, which in our case would be the supervisor of code, being responsible for. Being the entity that tends to notify if there's a retaliatory claim. His recommendation that was that any of the retaliatory investigations or findings related to the tenant protections piece should actually be funneled initially to the rent commission. First for, for reviewing, for, rather than code. So. That is something to consider. I can reach back out to council here to, do we want to pull them into a planning committee meeting? For additional. Yeah, I could, yeah, I'll touch base on some of the, he was looking into about a dozen things that we.
Get hold of time.
That, I mean, I don't know that we set a time limit for committee meetings, but I think they're generally an hour, so we are at 3:06. That's primarily what I was hoping to cover. With. Now to another story, this is not their competition. Anything that folks want to represent.
Prior to, to like an eviction. So it's sort of become. A landmark plan, which. For any. Have there. A registration.
If it's a, if it's written in as a written affidavit, then there would be that component to the process of filing. So whether it's a, whether it's a checkbox on the form that then. Can be confirmed by reaching out to the clerk or access to the database somewhere. That yes, that was the recommendation of the favor, that's a free.
Was that a piece that we exposed? Say publicly searchable that piece?
Right.
I'm going to look at 1, 2, 3 Main Street, is that a?
Rochester has, all the code stuff is visible. Yes.
Aside from Rochester, I'm not sure.
Sometime last year, I was asking. Lean and IT. Mayor about. Whatever the task is with our current system about. Violation search for public. I think their system has.
They don't want to do it.
The difference between our current code enforcement software and its capacity. Is pretty significant. I think it would be unrealistic to expect that. Our current database and software will need to be enhanced. By additional modules within the MUNIS platform, but we have the groundwork. It is my understanding, and I would want to confirm this with supervisor Schleger, that, I mean, we, the city of Antim was awarded an opportunity to be involved in. Two iterations of city tribes, I mean, intensive training and support on effectively implementing, implementing, integrating our code enforcement system and software. We had a subscription to building blocks, which is what Rochester uses and what does all of the above consistently and effectively. But to my knowledge, that subscription is either not active or not being used. And so MUNIS remains the software, but even within that tool, there are additional models that, which is where the program operations piece, that, that 1.9 million annually. When we consider staff, when we consider the database and the software enhancements, when we consider other areas of the budget where capacity will be. Likely not increased in terms of the additional workload, but compensated or considered. And then if we talk through wanting to make sure that there are funds available for the landlords who absolutely represent their interest in maintaining their properties. But are financially limited in doing so and how we're providing at a city level, the opportunity to, to receive funding to support those rehab efforts. I, that's why I envision this. It's not a rent that you generate or. Assets, it's a, covers the operations that get impacted.
You're holding for me.